Regional School Committee for a Joint Meeting at 5:00 PM. Do notice, having been posted pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions may be made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present. We'll do a roll call of members present. Ms. Ferreira.
Present.
Ms. Ashley.
Present.
Mr. Machado.
Present.
Ms. O'Brien.
Present.
Mr. Pasternak.
Present.
Ms. Solomon.
Present.
And the Chair is present. Also with us this evening are our Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Jeffrey Schoonover, our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Raquel Pellerin, our Director of Curriculum, Ms. Elizabeth Haskell, our Director of Special Education, Ms. Megan Ashton, and our Recording Secretary, Robin Vaccaro.
Absolutely. At this time, I will call to order a meeting of the Somerset School Committee at 5:01 PM. Do notice, having been posted. Roll call of members present this evening. Mr. Machado.
Present.
Ms. Corville.
Present.
Ms. Ferreira.
Present.
Mr. Gah.
Present.
And the Chair is present. Please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of Washington, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At that, at this time, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares. American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFME, paraprofessionals, and pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Superintendent of Schools. And I'd note that the Committee will return to open session. Do I have a motion?
Some motion.
Motion by Ms. Ferreira. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Solomon. We'll do a roll call. All those in favor, let's see. Ms. Ferreira.
Aye.
Ms. Ashley.
Aye.
Mr. Machado.
Aye.
Ms. O'Brien.
Aye.
Ms. Pa, Mr. Pasternak.
Aye.
Ms. Solomon.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
And it's Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental impact, effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFME, paraprofessionals, and pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Superintendent of Schools. The Committee will return to open session.
We have a Corville. We'll do the roll call vote to enter into executive session. Mr. Machado.
Aye.
Ms. Corville.
Aye.
Ms. Ferreira.
Aye.
Mr. Gah.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Okay. The next item on the agenda under new business was the discussion and act on amendment to the paraprofessional contact. We have no discussion on that at this time for the public, so we will table that item. The next item on the agenda is to discuss an act on the number of early release days for the 2025-2026 school calendar.
Okay. You've, both committees have had this discussion and review of the calendars up to the point. Both committees voted to accept the 25-26 calendars with the exception of early release days, one at the end of September, one at the end of October, and the other one at the end of January. I forget the exact date, but those are the three that we are currently using for early release type, well, professional development. Each time we have an early release day, we are, we provide two, two and a half hours of PDs, depending on the level, when buses get out and making sure teachers have time for lunch and so on. But two to two and a half hours each time. The only other professional development time that we have built into the calendar is the one full day that happens typically in November. We have a couple of hours also on one of the first two days of school before students arrive. So with that...
Jeff, could I just interject? Is there an early release PD day also in March? I'm looking.
There was this year, it's not next year.
There's a ver, there's a version of the calendar that has it on it, unless I'm looking at the wrong one.
Oh, Somerset Berkeley?
I'm looking at version one.
Yes, Somerset Berkeley, Regional, 25-26, what ver, version one?
We have version one in our folder.
Does it have it in March?
It does.
Yeah.
Usually it's in March?
Yeah.
The 18th. Well, Somerset has it on the 11th, and the high school is the 18th, so a week apart.
So in the, in addition, there are those other early release days in Somerset for, I'm trying to think of what month it is, I don't have it in front of me right now. That could be the, is that the elementary planning day?
January?
March 11th?
No, because it's also in the regional calendar as well.
It is, okay.
And it says PD specifically.
Okay. There are some other, other unique days in the schedule. The town election day in April, there's an early release day just for the high school so that voting can start at 12:00, kids are released at 11:30, so there's no overlap between them and the voters coming in. But then we also build in some professional development for our teachers with the remainder part of that day. But really, those three days I was referencing are the three in question about possibly eliminating for early release. And we know that they're dependent to transportation concerns in the past, particularly from elementary side, parents with, you know, kids get dropped off at home, the parent hasn't maybe returned from work yet. We tend to have a few of those, particularly early on in the school year where, you know, it happens probably every, every year, every other year where there's at least two of one of those situations. Let's see, do you know your, you want to share some information?
Sure. We have been talking primarily about keeping or eliminating. I wondered if you might consider some combination. As Mr. Schoonover just said, some of that, what I understood is that the elementary tends to be some of the issue, I think. And Ms. Machado, please correct me if I misunderstood or misinterpreted what you have said in the past, but my understanding is that sometimes families are struggling with childcare with the elementaries in the afternoons, and sometimes they may choose not even to send kids to school. And so, again, we keep having these conversations about attendance, and they need to be in school in order to learn, and then parents keep them home because it becomes a hardship. So I wondered if we might consider an elementary, maybe not doing early release days for the elementary, but maintaining the early release days for the secondary, which would be the middle school and the high school. The benefit for teachers is really significant, and it is much more difficult for us to coordinate the professional learning for the secondary level, the way that we can manage it for grade levels at the elementary. Because there, it is more departmentalized, you have varied grade levels, it will be nearly impossible to manage the, to provide the same level of professional learning at the high school that we currently offer if we were not, if we don't have those, that same number of early release days. Same situation at the middle school, so I will remind you, I know that I've presented the PD plan before, but I will remind you that we have PD pathways at the middle and high schools, and so teachers are in one of multiple sections. At the middle school, there are two sections, and at the high school, there are actually five. And so, again, the level that we could provide, it just would not be the same. I actually calculated the number of hours at Somerset Berkeley Regional High School, and I'm just, I'm basing it on the 24-25 school year because of the zone that we're in. Just from early release days, we provide 26 hours of professional learning. At the middle school, we provide 23 hours of early release day professional learning. And at the elementary level, we have provided 18 hours of early release day professional learning. That was just this year. We have been able to supplement the elementary with coordinating by grade level bands. So the best I can describe it is it would either be two grade levels or three grade levels at a time, and the principals have, and assistant principals have worked really hard to accommodate in terms of substitute coverage. That is also a hardship at the secondary. To pull a group of teachers out for a day and get, and get sub-coverage for that number of teachers is practically impossible. So, again, the example I'll give at Somerset Berkeley Regional High School, it's approximately 22 people per section. It's nearly impossible to cover 22 teachers without impacting a large number of students, and we've really moved away from kind of all the kids sitting in the dining center for the day. That's not good for anybody. And so, in order to avoid that, the early release days provide us, again, those supports. At the middle school, it's a little bit of a smaller group, it's a, it's a smaller school, so each team or each group is, it would be approximately 13 staff per session. A little bit more manageable, but, but still really difficult, especially if you take into account any of the adults who might not be in that day anyway for a variety, you know, illness or, you know, whatever the case may be. I, I can also address the cost?
Yeah.
Okay. So, again, Mr. Schoonover had mentioned the cost of buses, and I would share with you my understanding again if I misunderstood. But I think the total cost of buses, when we have an early release day, it is, it is a little bit higher. But I think that we, sorry, we looked at, I say, it's $3,400 per early release day additional, and that's for both districts combined.
It's $200. Every time there's an early release day, we, we are charged $200 per bus for that change in time for the early release day. So that is built on top of the, whatever the daily cost is for that particular bus. So we have 17 buses that run for the high school, 3,400. In fact, we have one extra bus for the, I was not picking up the extra bus that we run for Somerset, so it's actually a total of 18 buses that were running, so it would actually be $3,600.
So, thank you. So, Mr. Schoonover and I were talking about this and the cost of substitutes per day if we were covering teachers to provide comparable professional learning. We calculated approximately $140 per substitute teacher. If it's an average, it will be on one end or the other. Okay, I was flabbergasted at the cost as we started to calculate it at the elementary. One day to cover the number of staff members, which would be somewhere between six and 11 staff people per school, which is about somewhere between 20 and 32 staff members per session if we were running it comparable to what we currently do. For one day, it's somewhere between $2,800 and $4,480 per day for substitute teachers. At the middle school, for one day, again, I mentioned the 13 staff members approximately, that's about $1,820 per day. And then at the high school, for 22 people per session for one day, it would be somewhere between $1,960 and $3,220. So I couldn't believe how much it was for, for one day of substitute, and that does not include the cost of the PD provider. So we do have some people who provide PD, who are our internal people, they're, they are really knowledgeable, they're providing high-quality PD, but we also have teams that come in and provide professional learning. So that is not including that cost. I also do need to mention, we did not budget in FY '26 for subs to cover to this degree. We did budget for the professional learning, and we are hoping to maintain the pathways. This is year one of two that we planned at the middle school in our PD pathways, and this is actually year two of four that we planned here at the high school. And that would get, with our change in levels, that would actually get every cohort of teachers that teach freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors through that, reaching the teaching of learners, professional learning, in addition to the other sections that we are offering. Questions?
I have a question just on the S, for the SB proposed calendar, for the, on October 7th, it says no school for students.
On what day?
October 7th is a Tuesday, so it says no school for students. And then October 13th is no school for the holiday, and then the 29th of that month is an early release PD day. So my question is, what is staff doing on October 7th if there is no school for students?
Parent teacher.
Those parent teacher conferences all day? Okay. Oh, sorry, see, right there. Okay.
Oh, I didn't see that.
What I'm, what I'm noticing too, I just went back and I looked in the school committee folders on March 25th, I think, for the region, and March, I want to say 8th for Somerset, where the, the calendars there are the ones that you approved, and there isn't, I don't see an early release, I'm not, I'm not sure if there's one in March. So there are a couple of changes that are happening, maybe a little bit more detail on that other one, so it does say parent teacher conferences for October 7th.
And how about for April 13th for the high school? It says early release knowledge.
Is that a Monday?
Yes.
That is the town election.
Town.
So that's the one where I was saying students are dismissed at 11:30, so that voting can begin at noon.
Okay. And are staff doing PD?
Our staff does professional development.
So I'm just gonna basically say, you know, the whole, obviously, our kids in the, in the high school, I really have no issues with early release because, you know, the students are able to take care of themselves, and probably the middle school as well. Obviously, the K-8 is a different situation. But with that being said, you know, during negotiations, we also tried to make more professional development available for teachers by adding extra days and things like that, and that was rejected, which, listen, that's what bargaining's about. But I also remember that a lot of professional development done in the past was not always a class, sometimes it was individual base, where they would do it on their own time, some would, you know, I remember Dr., I remember Dr. Brad Smith, he would give us a report monthly of all the professional development, and I'm talking, it was like 45 different opportunities for teachers to take professional development each month. Eight would take it, six would take it, and things like that. We got away from that model, and there's probably a reason why we got away from that model, but I just can't in good faith see the K-5, or even the middle school, again, I don't know, continue to have all these early release days, you know. We're in the business of, of our students to be in the schools, learning 180 days of the year. It's bad enough we have the elections, we have, you know, the contractual ones that we do have, but continue to add and add, or subtract, or whatever the case may be, because it's the national holiday, or whatever the case, national elections, or anything like that. We, we need to get to a point where the students belong, isn't our building. So, you know, for the K-8, I'm, I'm definitely voting no on the extra early release days, just because I believe the kids belong in the school. I think we need to be, and I'm not a big fan of, you know, having 30 teachers out of the building and having 30 subs, I can tell you that, I'm not a big fan of that either. Professional development is exactly what it is, it's professional development. Some people do professional development on their own time. That's how it is, with some work, but it seems, when it comes to public schools, it has to be a certain date. You know, we do have, you know, faculty meetings, you know, instead of having a faculty meeting, maybe we do a professional development for an hour before, instead of a professional. I just, I can't continue to support these half-days. I've been against it. I was hoping we would do better during negotiations, we didn't. We got the contractual ones, the ones that are not contractual, I, I'm just not supporting them longer, so.
Can I just ask a clarifying question related to that? I was, I'm looking through the Somerset side of the calendar, and I'm only seeing one early release PD day on March 11th.
March 11th is the elementary early, is the elementary only early release day for planning purposes, it's not a professional.
Okay, so that's, okay. Right now, it says PD, that's why I was confused. So, so I don't see early release PD on my calendar.
So, yeah.
October 29th, I think I'm, I was gonna say, I, when, we were going over them, I know there was one that was end of September, end of October, and early January that was not contracted. 9/24.
But I thought what I heard the administration say at the beginning, and that's why I'm asking for clarification, is that you were looking to eliminate from the, possibly suggesting as a solution, to eliminate three of the early release days at the elementary level. Maybe I misunderstood that.
The three, that, the 9/24, 10/29, and 1/23. So instead of eliminating those for all three levels, I think what Ms. Haskell is saying is perhaps, as a happy meeting, we're just removing from the K-5.
Okay, is that correct?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
So can I just ask you to clarify what you don't support then? I'm just trying to understand, that's all.
It become, well, as it is now, just by the numbers we were given, it's 26, 23, 18 different, each level has different amount of hours of professional development. If we eliminate just the elementary, now we're going 26, 23, and the elementary's losing seven and a half.
Yep, now I understand what you're saying.
So how do, now it's becoming, and next thing you know, it's going to be the teachers coming in at the next negotiations, we're not getting as much in the elementary level as they do in the other three levels.
Megan?
Yeah.
We intend to provide the PD. So we, we would provide comparable professional development, we would not provide it in the same manner that we're currently providing it. If, if you choose to eliminate those three early release days for the elementary, we would provide the professional development in a different way, whether it be a half-day or a full day. So if you look at the hours, we, we intend to provide the same, at, at least, the same level that they are currently receiving. It would just, the delivery method would just be different, and it would not have an impact on students. Students would be in class, they would not go home halfway through the day.
So if we were to reduce the elementary only by the three early release days, you would provide the equivalent of three early release days worth of training for our elementary staff through substitute teachers, is what I'm hearing?
That is what we would do, yes.
So we wouldn't have the...
I'm not willing to spend money. I was willing to spend money during negotiations on professional development by giving an additional day. I'm not, they declined it. They declined professional development in that extra. We, I do, when I have a very tight budget, I will not incur $20, $3,600 in early release bus fees, substitute fees. At some point, we all need to get together and say, if you want something, we need to play ball. You know, I, I'm more than willing, but I'm not gonna, I'm not, but, but again, I'm only one vote, that's why I'm, I'm dead against going that particular route. So we're gonna keep kids in school, have them educate, but it's gonna cost me more money to keep students in the building. Well, I'm already paying a salary to keep students in the building, I'm not gonna incur more costs. I can use that money in different ways, like retaining a custodian that I just cut off the budget. You know, there are a lot of things that I removed out of the budget that I just cannot continue to cut, so that's why I just can't see myself supporting it. But that's just me. You know, I'm willing to be the lone voice and move forward, and, and if you're fine with it, I'm okay with it as well as a committee, but as...
I think I'm gonna go back to my original idea. Why can't we reduce it by one PD, early release at the elementary level, and the other two early release PD days at the elementary level be tacked on to a day where they would have had, you know, a staff meeting or a faculty meeting anyway, to get that additional hour at each session? So we're not, it, it's a step in the right direction. It's gonna save one day of the, the busing, the additional busing fees, at least for the elementary level, right? Like, I think it's a compromise, which is why I suggested it, and it, it acknowledges the hardship on parents, elementary parents specifically. It's a hardship for me and my house, I can tell you that. But I, we need to ensure that our educators and our other staff have the professional development they are required to have for relicensure. That's also an obligation of the district, right? And at some point, we have to spend money somewhere. And I understand it would have been, it would have been one solution to add an additional day to the school calendar, but we're also trying to provide high-quality professional development, and, you know, adding another day before school begins when everybody's frantic in terms of trying to get themselves set up for the first day with students. I'm not sure that that's the optimal time for training anyway, personally. So I think we need to land on something. I'm not sure where the region is on this.
My only question is, I'm not sure, we have an early release day October 29th, and then a few days later, a full day of PD on November 4th, and I feel like that's maybe a little, I would, and I understand the, the childcare, those inconveniences and those worries are not the same, generally speaking, at the high school, but it, it is money. And I'm, I would be inclined, this is just me, I would be inclined to cancel the October 29th early release PD at the, PD date for the region, save that, since there's PD a few days later, and it's a full day. That would be one thing I would be in favor of. Small change, but, I don't know what everybody else thinks.
Is Mrs. Ashley's idea doable, feasible? Okay, I like Mrs. Ashley's idea then.
So it's two different calendars, right?
Yeah, I only got one, so.
Okay, so we can do two votes, right, for the calendars? We're simpler, so I'm gonna start with the region first. So are there any other proposals at the regional level? Is anyone else?
Just out of curiosity, you just mentioned something that I didn't even think of. This professional development is also credit towards license, their teacher's license? I just want you to know, I know many doctors, many CPAs, many radiology therapists, nurses, funeral directors, barber, hairdressers, barbers, nail technicians, that they all have to get certified CEUs, and I just want you all to know, all of them do it on their own personal time. Just think about that.
But we have an agreement either way, so we have a legally binding agreement of what we have promised to provide them, so it's our, I think it's our obligation to uphold that.
Does it, does it?
And believe me, as an educator, I can tell you that the school-provided PD didn't give me the credits I needed to relicensure, right? I needed to take classes and seek out other opportunities. It's not everything, but it's, it's something, and I think it's necessary. It's not everything, but it's it's something, and I think it's necessary. We can agree to disagree.
Can I ask a clarifying question before entertaining a motion? So for the for the region, there, this calendar has an early release P D day, March, is that correct? March eighteenth.
Yes, March eighteenth.
That is correct. Okay, so the current calendar for the region has early release days for professional development on nine twenty four, on ten twenty nine, a full day on eleven four, early release P D on one twenty eight, and then an early release P D on three eighteen, as well as four thirteen. It doesn't say P D, but that's early release because of the town election, I assume that would be P D.
Yes.
Okay. I would entertain a motion, I'll make a motion, to a limit for the region to eliminate the early release P D day of October twenty ninth, and to maintain the other P Ds as presented, uh, early release days as presented. Motion by Ms. Ferrer and seconded by Ms. O'Brien. Anything further on discussion, Mr. Schoonover?
Yeah, just for an additional point of clarification, because there is still, unless Dr. Rutherford has any new information, but the high school calendar also always includes an early release day on the day of the prom, which is not reflected here yet because we don't yet have that date. That's, that is a, was a high day of absences historically, and moving to the early release day and making it a requirement has improved attendance drastically. So that is another early release day that will be adjusted to the calendar later. But it's just, we don't have that date yet, is that correct still? Right, okay.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So voted. Mr. Machado in opposition, the motion carries.
Mrs. Ashley, could you make the motion with your amended suggestions?
Um, I I would be interested to hear if you have a recommended date to eliminate. My inclination would be to be consistent with the region and eliminate the October twenty ninth. Is that something that?
Just, well, for me, my vote, yes, that's, I'm fine with that.
Especially because it does have one, three days later, same as the high school. Okay, I'm looking at the right calendar, okay. Make sure I was looking at the right calendar before I said that.
Exactly.
Had the book open, so.
So at this point, I would entertain a motion to amend the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school calendar to eliminate the early release day on October twenty ninth.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second.
Point of order.
Yes.
Now, if we're amending what we already voted, we voted with no, those, we didn't have those three dates. So if you're gonna amend it, you wanna add the nine twenty four and the one twenty eight.
I'll have to do that vote.
Fair enough.
So, or you can, or you can make a new motion to approve the calendar as presented without the the twenty ninth, either way.
That was probably easier.
Right. All right, so I, wait, we, do we have to rescind?
Yes.
Do you rescind your motion and your second? So to circle back, I would actually entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six calendar as presented. Am I doing this right?
With the exception of October twenty ninth.
With the exception of October twenty ninth, which will be removed.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Machado. So voted.
All right, moving right along, the next item on the agenda is the update on parent teacher conferences.
All right, so it was, um, I I think it was a mixed bag, just to summarize it, kind of, something like that. It spoke with the principals. There was a lot of, beginning at the elementary level, a lot of positive feedback from one, one particular school, like almost, you know, overwhelming that it was really seen as as meaningful and helpful to teachers. They really liked the connections that were made, which are all happening already every day. But having that opportunity for another face to face, some teachers and principals really spoke about how effective it is. Some, some feedback was that even within the elementary schools, it was more effective with our older students, say, three, four, five, or four, five, compared to the girls in childhood. So there was, there was, there was that. At the middle school, because of our teaming structure that we have there, the teams identified the students to meet, well, the families to meet. And the the teams met together. They found that, Dr. McKinnon said that, they found that very beneficial, there was a lot of parent interest. In fact, there were some parents that they weren't able to schedule due to the structure. There were more more parents that they wanted meetings with, or parents wanted meetings with them. So they ended up scheduling some additional meetings in following days, just to make sure that they were able to meet everyone's needs. So at the middle school, it was fully booked and apparently very beneficial. At the high school, it was, Dr. Rutherford said that about three teach, about three conferences per teacher was the average, did have maybe the, you know, the impact that we expected. But the ones that we did have, targeting students who were on the D and F list, I think Dr. Rutherford said about sixty percent of the conferences that did take place were students who, at the end of the second quarter, were on that D or F list. So I think the third quarter just closed within the last few days, right? So both at the middle school and the high school will be receiving, will be able to get those grays, see the students who were on the D and F list at either level, see where they are now at the end of the third term, you know, just see if there was any impact for those students. So looking at that data is something that is really the next step that we wanna do. But I think it depends on level, I think as kids, as kids get older, maybe those connections or it was maybe less impactful, with the exception of the middle school. But it was, like I said, that the way they approached it, they found that to be very beneficial to the to the families and for them to have those engaging conversations as a team.
Anyone on the region have any questions?
Any questions from the Somerset?
No, if you could just slip, maybe you'd come back to us with that data, because I think that's gonna be the key piece.
And one of the, with the negotiations with the S T A, we did agree via the, there's the review and evaluation committee, which looks at parent teacher conferences and back to school lines. So now, now that this, all of these are behind us, we will be scheduling a meeting this spring. The principal members of that committee, the S T A members of that committee, the S T A president, myself, and will gather feedback from both the administrator's side, parent's side, and teachers to figure out what this looks like next year, if there are any changes that need to be made. And I'll share that with you once that happens as well.
Great, thank you. Next on on the agenda, we have joint policies for first reading. Anyone from the region wanna pull, separate one, or can we take them as a slate? Great. So I would entertain a motion to approve the first reading of the following policies. Student transportation services, E E A, special education transper, special education transportation, E E A B, animals in schools, I M G.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Ashley and seconded by Ms. Ferrer, is there anything further on discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
Oh, I I forget, I know, I'm sorry. I'm tired, I'm exhausted.
It's okay.
I'm fully transparent with you, I'm not on my A game. Okay, um, at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the first reading of the following policies, unless the budget, uh, the, yeah, see, budget subcommittee, I'm telling you, I should just go home right now. The policy subcommittee feels differently, student transportation services, E E A, special education transportation, E E A B, and animals in schools, I M G.
Second, so moved. Yeah, I thought, I thought, she was, she was looking at me like she was about to say it.
Who did the motion?
I did the motion.
Okay, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, we're quick, we're good, we're gonna pause there. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the annual appointment of the superintendent to the Reed's collaborative board of directors. On behalf of the region, I would entertain a motion to appoint Superintendent Schoonover to serve as the Somerset Berkeley Regional School District representative on the board of directors of the Reed's collaborative in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter forty, Section four E, as amended by Chapter forty three of the Acts of twenty twelve, for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Solomon, seconded by Ms. O'Brien, anything further on discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
And at this point, I would entertain a motion to appoint Superintendent Schoonover to serve as the Somerset Public Schools representative on the board of directors of Reed's collaborative in accordance with Massachusetts General Law's Chapter forty E, forty, Section four E, as amended by Chapter forty three of the Acts of twenty twelve, for the twenty five, twenty six school year.
So moved, I mean.
Yep.
Yep. We have a motion in a second, any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So voted.
Next item on the agenda is to discuss an act on meeting audio, visual, and remote participation concerns. So we have all experienced technical difficulties in trying to make sure that these all meetings are accessible to the public in, from an auditory perspective, and also when members need to participate remotely for various reasons. And so we asked our director of technology to secure some pricing regarding our, audio visual equipment. You have that information, I think, in your packet. I don't know if there is an appetite at this point to proceed with the purchasing of the proposed equipment.
So I I think I can jump in if if you don't mind, so.
I don't mind at all.
The, we've had a few proposals come across our desk. One of the proposals was more extensive work that would have allowed for some speakers to be, you know, in the room so that the people who are here in the public can better hear what we're saying. This is a a less expensive option that doesn't solve that part of our accessibility concern. We, for the solution, that was the full solution, where it would address our Zoom meetings, and it would also address people who were in person. There would be obviously like cabling involved, which can be costly, especially when you have architecture like this, right? And you're trying to ensure that the building remains looking this beautiful after the work is done. And there's also, you know, the labor that goes along with something like this, which wasn't even part of the quote. And I think it was somewhere in the ballpark of sixteen thousand dollars just for the hardware. So, given the financial circumstances, I I would be inclined to support this alternative for now because it's a solution that would allow us all to participate via Zoom when we must. And and I do think it's important because the, there was just an extension on public meetings through virtual means, through, was it twenty twenty?
June twenty seven.
Twenty seven. So I I think, and we've proved that we need to have that option at times, for various reasons. So this is a a solution that is a lesser amount. It would only solve our Zoom problems, but it would solve our our Zoom problems. And I think what it does is buy us some time to look at a comprehensive solution and plan it out into a future budget. That's just my two cents.
So, Madam Chair, Mr. Schoonover, where's the funds gonna be allocated from, is it gonna be this year's budget?
Depending whether work would be done, if it takes place before June thirtieth, yes. I mean, it's really just purchasing equipment, you know, I don't think the installation is a heavy lift.
Yeah, do you think, I don't think we'll have a problem fitting it in this this year's, right?
No.
So how much more are we looking at for the full option?
Well, we didn't receive the quotation for the labor, which is typically just as costly as the hardware.
I think it was about thirteen thousand, I think, for the equipment.
I'm just wondering, Jen, if it's worth it, if we have the money in this year's budget to just go for the full thing?
I I just have a couple of quick questions regarding this. The, the option that was presented to us for this evening, not to exceed sixty five hundred dollars, is that compatible to, let's say, we decide we wanna add for the the members here, or are we just spending sixty five hundred dollars and that won't even help? That, you know, obviously sixteen thousand dollars, it works along with the whole building here and also at the middle school, I'm assuming. But I'm just curious to, how is it going? I just don't wanna spend sixty five hundred dollars and then phase two, you can't use that, phase one items. So that that's, that's what I would need to know before I could agree to the sixty five hundred dollars.
So my understanding is that, and as Ms. Ashley said, there are really two unique issues. There's the issue with Zoom meetings, which the proposal here in front of you would address that only. Though the full, the other part of it, where if if we all have a microphone sitting in front of us and a speaker system and a microphone over at the podium, so that everyone in this room can better hear each other, which would also help our listeners on S A T V and Berkeley Access Television, that addresses that part of it. But that doesn't really help with someone participating in Zoom. It might, the sound might be better, but the issues that you recently had, where we're trying to figure out something here, to have that screen and the camera that, so you can see, that would still not be high quality, I'd say. You know, so it's like, it would help that that, you know, the microphones and everything would would chip away at some of the problems for a Zoom participant, but it wouldn't solve the problem necessarily. You know, completely.
Because I'm always concerned with, something that I learned from technology in the building is when you purchase a piece of equipment, and then when you purchase another second piece of equipment, if it's a different model, different make, when it becomes a sinking issue, company A blames company B, company B blames company A, and then if there's a C and a D company, they keep on blaming each other, and before you know it, no one takes the blame. So my only concern is, if you do have one system and the next system that's going to solve the hearing issue for the crowd, are those, are you gonna get feedback from different microphones, from the Zoom mic and now also the room mic? So that that's my only concern before.
So if if I could jump in, I don't think that the Zoom room solution is going to be compatible with the accessibility in the room. I don't think it's, I don't think it's part of that solution. But Zoom room can be moved, the hardware can just be moved anywhere. That doesn't need to be married to this room and in the Somerset Middle School Media Center. It could go to any conference room that, I'm sure the administration has lots of meetings with families that are, you know what I'm saying? That would benefit from having that technology. lots of meetings with families that are, you know what I'm saying? That would benefit from having that technology in there. So in my opinion, it's just an investment for each district, and then the administration can choose what to do with the hardware, you know, after we've moved on to a comprehensive solution.
If we had one of those, I totally agree. If we had one of those, uh, multi-head, multi-mic, uh, systems in front of us here on a table in, between us, I'm sure that a doctor else would, would use far more frequently than the school committee, to your point, with all of the, the meetings and how things take place, yes.
And also for professional development, perhaps. Yeah, right. I can think of. I also, I think we have, I think we have an obligation to solve our remote meeting, um, problem, not only for the members and for, um, for the public, also to be able to participate and hear fully when we're conducting an open meeting. So, I'm sorry. For that reason, I'd be in favor of proceeding with Phase one to address the remote meeting issue. Um, and then continue to work toward the larger sound issues we have. So I would entertain a motion to authorize the Director, on behalf of the region, I would entertain a motion to authorize the Director of Technology to move forward with purchasing the video conferencing devices and cameras for use Zoom room, um, for the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee meetings, also for the use of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee District, I should have, um, not to exceed, uh, six thousand five hundred dollars from the FY twenty-five budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Solomon, second by, was that Ms. Ashley? Ms. Ferrera. Anything further on discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
And at this point, I would entertain a motion to authorize the Director of Technology to move forward with purchasing video conferencing devices, Zoom room, and cameras for use at Somerset, uh, School Committee meetings as well as within the Somerset Public School District, not to exceed sixty-five hundred dollars from the FY twenty-five budget.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Fabulous. Next on the agenda is public input. Do we have any public input for the joint meeting?
Patty Steele, um, I wasn't able to watch the, I mean, I was able to attend your last Somerset Berkeley meeting, but I did watch it online, and I mentioned something at the K to eight meeting last week, and I think it begs to be repeated to your committee. Um, I was never so impressed with the young people that stood up and talked about, um, budget and everything. But what impressed me even more was the fact that two of them came up with solutions, and, and offered solutions instead of constantly hearing all the problems. And if that's the type of youngster we're producing here at Somerset, you're doing a great job. You're doing a great job. And what I'd like to do right now is just say to the, the school committee, to the administration, to, to have parents, to teachers, to the community, we need to stop vilifying the school committee, the administration, and we need to collect, we come together as a village, because it takes a village to produce the best things like that in the neighborhood. And if people wanna help the budget, and you know what, volunteer some of your time. Get on your boosters, get on all those other parenting things, and volunteer your time. I don't know if, if we pay anybody to collect the tickets, or the fees and stuff like that, most people get stoked for that, but wouldn't it be great if we have hundreds of kids playing sports right now, and one parent says, okay, I'll do that tonight. I'll collect the ticket. So now we don't have to pay anybody else. Just, we need to come together as a community, as a village, raising these fine little kids that we have, and I think you're doing a great job, and I just want to remember that.
Thank you.
And you have one question though, as, um, upon speaking in the professional development. You said eighteen, twenty-three, twenty-six. Now, is that the mandated training that all teachers have to get? Like, we all have to get, uh, legal training. We have to get, um, bullying and all that stuff. Is, is that included in those hours? The mandated trainings that have to be done? So, how do they provide that to our staff? Do they have to do it on their own?
Are we entertaining the discussion?
I think, if, if you're comfortable.
No, that's okay. I just.
I just wanted to put it out there. I, I just, because I know that when I was in education, sometimes I could ask my administrator, hey, I really wanna go to this conference. It's, it's one day. It's on reading and, you know, class such and such. Can I go to that? And is that part of my eighteen hours? I'm just saying, do we have to give them eighteen hours here at schools? Or can we provide them with a list like what Victor was saying that Brad used to have? And they can attend those things, and that's part of their eighteen hours? Like, I was just wondering how that goes contractually. Are we obligated to do it in school during school time, or can they use that eighteen hours outside to a different training? That's just something I'm throwing out there. I don't need any answer. I'm just, I'm just wondering.
Thank you. Is there any other public input?
Seeing none, um, on behalf of the region, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm not, we're not adjourned.
We're not adjourned. We're recessing.
I tried, sorry. I, on the other hand.
We're recessing.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn for the Somerset School Committee.
So moved.
Second. My motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We will however take a brief.
Gonna go home and die.
Have a good night.
All right, we're back in session. I would just note, uh, for the record, that the next regularly scheduled meeting of this body will be held on Tuesday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five at six PM here in the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School Library. Next on the agenda, um, we originally were, uh, scheduled to meet with our fabulous field hockey D-two state champions. They were unable to attend this evening, and so we will, perhaps, hope to reschedule that for a later date. Next on the agenda is our student rep report. Do you have anything?
I, I don't have anything, but, uh, Mr. Viera and Ms., uh, Ms. Kettle sent their apologies that they were unable to attend this evening. I, I know that of some of the things that they would have stayed, certainly, uh, we have our spring musical happening, uh, this weekend, starting on Thursday night. Uh, prior to that, at six o'clock, we also have our, uh, spring art gallery opening. Uh, it's been nice the last few years with those two events, uh, back to back, so that people can come see the amazing things that our students in, in fine arts classes are producing, and then walk down the hallway and then see the other end of the spectrum with our, uh, fine performing art students with their spring production. So, uh, that's happening on Thursday, or Thursday evening, and then the, the production will be, uh, Friday, Saturday, and.
Not Sunday.
No Sunday.
Two on Saturday.
And I know we also have with this, uh, all of the celebrations that we've been having for our students, particularly our student athletes, uh, another one that kind of maybe flew under the radar a little bit was a student who will also be coming to, hopefully, our next meeting with the field hockey team that, uh, who participated on our, uh, on the C-conc, uh, co-op swim team. Uh, so he'll be coming. He, uh, won two D-two state championships, uh, this, uh, winter and, uh, set a number of records. So he'll, he'll be coming here, uh, so he can, uh, receive his well-deserved recognition from, from the committee and the community.
Fabulous. Thank you. You're almost as good as Mr. Viera.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The next item on the agenda of the new business is, um, we're pleased to get an update from the Somerset Berkeley Special Ed Parent Advisory Council. Um, Ms. Ashley, I don't know if you wanna do an introduction? We're gonna hear from the President of CPAC.
Sure. Um, so over the past few years, um, these, these ladies have worked really hard, um, at developing our, our Parent Advisory Council for special education. Um, we regionalized a few years ago with Dyson, the Holbitz, and Swansea. Um, we now have a functioning CPAC between Berkeley and Somerset, and we petitioned to the state to maintain. Um, typically, they grant waivers for regionals if you can't get it running in your, um, own district. But we asked them to, um, support the continuation. We work together as a regional district for high school. It's nice to develop our relationship, starting, you know, when, when they're young and with our families. Um, so we've maintained a, um, a Somerset Berkeley, um, regional CPAC, and, um, Jess Willett and Erica Souza have been a big part of the development of this. Um, and I, I enjoy working with them, um, and they've put on lots of events, and they continue to work hard to try to get, um, attendance at all the events and to keep it a very, a positive format, which I'm very grateful for. Um, I've seen how in, in past, sometimes it could become a venue, uh, that we all look for in parts in our life, or venting and things, and these, um, they've really kept it in a positive format where we're looking to collaborate with one another and help families find the support that they need and work together. And so, um, I asked, um, if they'd be willing to come to the school community to give us an update, so I appreciate the time, um, coming tonight, and I'll give it over to you guys. Okay?
I'm Jessica Willett, the Somerset Berkeley CPAC President.
I'm Erica Souza, the Secretary.
Uh, we started off this school year reaching out to the various principals in the, within the district, and we attended back-to-school functions. Um, each of the principals let us have a little quick presentation. We handed out flyers to try to build interest. We have a Facebook, uh, group that we run, um, that we handed out QR codes to find it and got a lot of parent interest, um, built up from there. Um, we had our first official meeting as the new Somerset Berkeley CPAC on October twenty-fifth, where we had an informal voting. Um, I say informal because we had to transition from the regional one to this one, and we will be having another voting, um, this coming June. Our bylaws state that we have, um, we vote for our positions every year. Um, we then had a, um, Federation for Children with Special Needs Workshop in November. They presented on the new IEP. That workshop was virtual, uh, cause that's still the mode that they utilize. Um, this past March, we met here, um, with some students, actually, I'm sorry, we met at the public library, um, with, uh, some high school students for the Mass Abilities Program that is offered here, specific to our Somerset Berkeley High School students. It's, um, the Pre-Employment Transition Services. So students on an IEP or a five oh four, they have a program that they run here. He comes twice a week, did he say?
I think so.
I believe he comes twice a week, and he works with students during their win block. That's what it's called here, right?
Is it raider block?
Raider block. What is it? The, raider, blue raider block. Sorry. I have a middle schooler. Um, so they, they work with them during the blue raider block, so they can talk to them about what their interests are. The student that was there that night, her interests in childcare. So he was, he works with her to build ways to get her, what colleges to look for, um, ways to get her some community service hours. Um, next week, at the middle school, we will be having a workshop with the Community Autism Resources, presenting resources for our, um, ASD population families. Uh, May third, we will be at the Neurodiversity Walk here. We'll have a table, again, trying to build interest, have some flyers to hand out. Um, the, uh, Mrs. Schoonover politely invited us to participate in her preschool night back in February, where Erica and another member was there running a table, uh, handing out flyers, again, really trying to build that parent interest. And, um, we'll then have the, in June sometime, it hasn't been scheduled yet, we'll have the vote, and I'm hoping to run a binder workshop, where we'll have, um, resources for families to create a binder for they, so they have a safe space to keep all of their IEP documents, school evals, report cards, progress reports, anything like that. We wanted to say a special thank you for all of the support staff, um, to Kim for supporting us throughout the years. Um, for all of the principals, thank you so much for getting out our, uh, flyers and our workshops. Robin.
Your love.
I hound her all the time to send out my workshop, my flyers, and I appreciate all of your help. And to Meg for supporting us, and Melissa, who is the coordinator in Berkeley.
Thank you.
They've been busy.
Yes.
Actually, they do this all on top of their full-time jobs, you know, working with us, so we, you know, having children of their own and family, so I really appreciate it. Thank you.
And we're sorry that we are running late and that you had to wait longer than.
It's all right. Robin was letting, keeping me updated on when to come.
Anyone have questions?
Actually, one question.
He teased us.
One question.
One, that's all you're allowed.
This is the one that, we as a school committee, I know Kim's very active in the pack, we as school committee members, how can we help?
Spread the word. Honestly, it's just, um, we're trying to find that, that, I don't know what, how to say it, but we're trying to find like that balance of, I think COVID and having the virtual option made people, a lot of people comfortable, but it's all about making connections in person, like this, face to face. How can I help? Here's the resources. Here's the physical. Here's the, you know, we had a binder workshop, um, ready to go in December. We had no interest, so it got canceled. That's why I'm hoping to do it in June. Um, I just, it's really all about helping spread the word. I know that childcare can become an issue, so I don't know if that's a way to, if we, if that gets tricky, though, with having other people's children in the care of someone. I've thought about, you know, our high schoolers need community service hours. Maybe they can come and get some community service hours that way, but then, again, you're running the, that, the challenge of having other people's children in their, in your care. So, I'm open to any suggestions, if anyone's had any.
Do you have any suggestions?
I know, but I can spread the word, but I'm just wondering if it's one of those, uh, if you're having a hot time bringing people in, um, I'm just wondering if there was like a workshop type of thing where you have a speaker or someone.
So we usually have speakers at all of like, the Mass Abilities one was specific just to Somerset Berkeley families. Um, I know Dr. Brailsford shared it in her workshop, um, Dr. Champagne. I sent it to her and was like, please, cause I can't know who's on an IEP or a five oh four, but I'm like, please, share, share, share. Um, Melinda Antunes at the Somerset Middle School. I told her to target those eighth graders who will be coming here next year, and we got one parent.
The hard part is, you know, in fact, again, we, I've seen this, parents are, you know, they're trying to get dinner on the table. So, again, we, we met and we were trying to brainstorm, um, you know, different times to do meetings and things. So again, I think it's a work in progress. Um, but I think if parents know the, like, how to get in touch with the CPAC, and then we can work with, with them when, you know, varying our times of meetings and presentations and different things.
Yeah. I love to, I don't, I'm not a high-tech person. Um, maybe my son can teach me, but I'd love to have the option of hybrid more often, maybe, if that will help. That way, you're meeting the parents in that balance. Um, my oldest, who actually is a Somerset Berkeley student, he suggested recording it and utilizing the, um, the YouTube channel, Dr. Brailsford. Um, he was, he said, Mom, what about our, what is it? Blue Raider Studios? Oh, right there. Hi. He recommended that, and I was like, oh, cool. How do I do that? And so, I don't know if that's an option ever, but, um, yeah.
Well, we just, we just approved to purchase a Zoom room, uh, where you can have a meeting here and others can participate, hopefully, from home as well. So if we are able to figure it out on our own, I would say that would be a great opportunity to,
That would be awesome.
Utilize those, uh, that equipment as well, so.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
The next item on the agenda is, uh, to discuss an act on the twenty-five, twenty-six school choice participation. Mr. Schoonover?
Sure. So, uh, thank you. Uh, I've been talking enrollment, uh, pretty frequently, and, and one of the things I've, I've been mentioning is our, based on, uh, past trends, trying to anticipate what our enrollment will be for twenty-five, twenty-six in grade nine. So, based on the numbers that we, we're receiving from, we've recently received from Somerset Middle and Berkeley Middle, it actually looks like the projected enrollment is going to be slightly higher than what we originally, uh, what I originally anticipated. Uh, so for instance, we have, um, so I'll get to the school choice thing in a second. So we currently have two hundred fourteen, uh, eighth graders at Somerset Middle, and thirty-five of those will, will be headed to Diamond as, as, uh, we have every year. Is, uh, Diamond has a, uh, the way they operate is a, an enrollment, fixed enrollment per each of their four standing towns. So based on whatever the total enrollment is in grade nine, a certain percentage of that comes from Somerset. Uh, so we, we know, um, very consistently what that would be. Uh, and then a few other students who, um, will be going to Bristol Aggie, uh, and I pull out the few, um, would-be school choice students, because we do have four members of our eighth grade class who don't live in Somerset, who are, uh, children of STA members, who will, um, likely be coming in as school choice students next year. So, um, pulling those out, we're anticipating about a hundred seventy or so eighth graders, not counting those four other, uh, potential school choice students. Uh, from Berkeley Middle School, uh, we have, uh, they have, uh, eight students who will be attending Bristol Aggie twenty. who will be attending Bristol Aggie, 22 Bristol Plymouth. Um, so there were 97 students in the eighth grade class at, at Berkeley Middle and, uh, 67 of those students are coming to Somerset Berkeley, eight of whom are school choice students coming to Somerset Berkeley. Uh, so 59 Berkeley residents plus eight potential school choice students. So, when we look at our, um, our numbers from Somerset Middle and from, um, Berkeley Middle, it looks like we'll have roughly 230 or so students just from, from there, along with 12 students who are likely to be school choice in addition to that. Uh, so which puts us in a peculiar spot because I was going to, uh, request 15 slots, um, because this past year, I think we had one student from Berkeley Middle coming to us as a school choice student and next year is looking like we'll have eight. Uh, so assuming those and those eight students are grandfathered in, uh, then the four S, uh, children of STA members would, like I said, would only leave three available positions. Uh, so if we did that, we would have 245 students. If we wanted to bump that up and allow for 20 school choice, uh, students entering grade nine, um, that would allow about eight or so students from, uh, the lottery system, uh, to enter and would bring us to, uh, enrollment of about 250 or so. And I know we've been making choices based on 235, uh, which, you know, it throws a little bit of another, uh, little, uh, snag in that, in that wheel. But, uh, so if we had 15, we're looking at 245 students with three really lottery slots available. If we have 20, then it offers up a few more slots to those students in the lottery. And Robin was saying she already has about 30 people on, um, who have expressed interest in school choice seats next year, uh, that we will be responding to and letting them know that the, the window is open for them to apply if they still are interested.
Any questions?
I just have one quick question. Last year, we opened, how many, was it 15 as well?
Fifteen's our.
And what was the waiting list after that? Do you remember?
We didn't have a waiting list. Probably five.
Yeah. We didn't have as, as many, we, we have, uh, more people expressing interest this year than we've had in the past several years.
I'm sorry, can I just ask for you to remind me? So, when we were talking about projections, I think you said based on two, a class size of, did you say 230 from?
Two, uh, about 230 will be coming just from our two middle schools. And then the, an additional 12 students. So, we're really, we're at 242 already, uh, 230 from residents of Somerset Berkeley and additional 12 who are there as school choice students already. So, we're, we're looking at an enrollment of about 242. And there's always some fluctuation every summer. There are students who may have accepted, uh, a seat at Bristol Aggie, Bristol Plymouth, or Diamond, who then ultimately decide that they want to come here. Uh, so it, it's always, you know, we'll be close to that number, but there's always a little bit of a fluctuation.
And you said there were four students who are, um, children of STA members? And do we know for sure that they want to attend? Okay. Is that technically our school choice? We have to vote that number? Like?
They, they would be included in the school choice.
Okay.
Plus eight from Berkeley.
But the eight from Berkeley.
And the eight from Berkeley, they're, they're.
So, sorry.
Twelve.
Okay. So, it would be, okay. So, the question is, do we want to vote like basically 12 or 15?
Or I would say we want to vote a total of 15 or 20 because there are already sort of 12 committed seats.
So, we either make the number 235 or 250.
You would either make the number, uh, 245 or 250 total enrollment.
We're in the wish of the committee.
I, I'm just with the reduction of staff that we made in the, in the Berkeley budget, uh, the Somerset Berkeley budget. I'm just curious, um, adding those additional five or even, um, eight, how is that going to fit in, in that freshman class? What, what are the si, the class sizes are you looking at? Because how many, how many current, how many freshmen's in this year's class? Freshmen's, you know how many? I'm sorry. How, how many freshman students do we have in the building now? Please hold and enjoy this Japanese music.
See who gets it first.
We'll get it first.
Uh, 189.
189? That, that is, uh, that, you're, you're looking at a, almost a 23% increase as it is right now with those 12. Um, I don't feel extremely comfortable going to 15. I can't even imagine going to 20. So, um, and how many, and how many, and the senior class that's leaving this year, how many?
213.
213. So, we're adding.
With the rising seniors, you're at 252. That's the really big class next year's.
Yes.
Yeah. Which, which used to be, 250 was our, was our target every year. Like, whatever we had for, when, when class sizes were, uh, typically between 235, 240, it was about more 230 to 240, we would always try to get school choice seats. They, yeah, it's up to about that 250 number to maintain a, a school size of about a thousand. That, that was what we were doing for a while until we started seeing this decrease in enrollment.
So, 189 right now is kind of low with small classes. So, you got to put it in that perspective. It's low. So, going to 250 might not be such a shock.
Right. And we, and we were planning, like I said, for 235. So, we're, we're about, right now, we're about seven students off from where we were. If we had 15 school choice seats, we'd be 10 students higher. And again, the numbers can change. Could be a little bit less than that, could be more than that, but about 10 students, uh, more than what we were predict, predicting, uh, which would be about an increase of one student per class. I mean, there are about 10 or so grade nine classes, about 10 or so intro to physics classes roughly. So, you're looking at about a student, uh, one student increase per class.
Do I have a motion?
It's so, can, is your recommendation for 15?
I, I still would, uh, lean toward the 15. Yes.
Um, I would entertain a motion to allocate 15 grade nine school choice seats for the 2025-2026 school year.
So, moved.
Motion by Ms. Ashley and seconded by Ms. O'Brien. Is there anything further on discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. The next item on the agenda is to discuss an act on the appointment of a second member to the OPEB Subcommittee. You may recall that at our last meeting, we, um, appointed, uh, our new member, Mr. Pasternak, to serve on the OPEB Subcommittee. We need one more member.
I was gonna say, I was, I, I thought I gave it up to give it to him, but I mean, if you knew, I would be more than happy to.
Continue?
Sure.
Awesome. Great. Then I don't even think we need a motion. We're just clarifying. Thank you. Great.
That's fine.
Hear it.
Okay. Um, the next item on the agenda is to consider the re-establishment of the Tri-District Collaboration Subcommittee. Um, and I think this was born out of, I don't know if it was our last meeting or one before that, but we were, when we were talking about the budget in particular and we were talking about some of the pain and challenges felt done in both towns, we're talking about, um, having maybe a, a more formal mechanism to explore opportunities for collaboration in a variety of forms. Am I remembering correctly, Mr. Schoonover? Um, I know this was, this committee, Subcommittee was active a while ago and then sort of, I know that collaboration continues sort of on an ad hoc basis as things arise, but given the trajectory of both towns, finances and districts, it may be a good idea to re-establish the Subcommittee. Um, so I think, um, if memory serves members, we had, uh, members from the region and members from.
Berkeley.
Berkeley and Somerset K to eight. And then I'm trying to remember if there were also outside community members.
I know I was on it, Julie, we had Kim Hebert, Jeff. We had, the committee was about nine to 10 members, if I want to say. I can go in my old notes and look at it. But, um, I kind of would like to change, not so much just the Tri-District Committee. I would also like to get the town leaders involved as well because, um, I definitely think, you know, as Mr. Schoonover had mentioned about our Somerset Library, they're putting a new HVAC system in. What other needs, you know, do, does Berkeley need a position as well? You know, one of those things more of, I kind of want a more community-based, uh, than just Tri-District. That's, that would be my, if you want to start with Tri-District, I would first, before putting this committee together, I would say have the superintendents and the principals meet first because I was actually amazed, the school committees were amazed how much collaboration was already happening that we weren't recording or were aware of. And I'm sure more, more and more that goes on as it is. But, uh, I would say before we form the committee, I would ask them to first meet on their own and then come back to us what is currently being done and then form the committee. Because I would hate to invite the town when we don't have the resources, but first we need to see what we have to do internally. So, that would be my only recommendation, but establishing it's not a problem in my opinion.
That makes sense to me. Perhaps, um, if there are members who are interested and willing to serve on that once it is formulated, can forward that to them and we can go from there. Okay.
You know, what I would recommend, um, as the chair, I would recommend seeing if one of our K eight members who are serving on this board as it is, served for the K eight side, Jolene served for the Berkeley side. And, uh, this way, we are already on as a regional member, but we can't have four members because obviously we'd have a quorum. But I think the three school committee members, if there's a possible way to choose within this committee, might make the best, uh, sense.
And we will know.
Next week.
At the next meeting next week because that's our reward.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a superintendent's update.
Yeah, well, it was superintendent's update is really the staffing update. There are, um, no, uh, no appointments or resignations to report this month.
Fabulous. Thank you. Next on the agenda, uh, Ms. Pellerin, we have the March Financial Statement.
Um, the financial statements include, uh, the recently approved budget amendments. We are in our final quarter. What we're going to do is, um, collectively meet, look at the expenditures that we need for the remainder of the year and most likely come back with another amendment to close out, um, the final few months of the year.
Fabulous. Does anyone have any questions on the March PIN stat or? Thank you. Um, the next item on the agenda is continue to discuss an act on the 25-26 annual budget. I don't.
I would say the only update since the last meeting, uh, is that the, I don't think the Somerset Health Plan Group, have they voted on their plan when we voted? Uh, so I think it was just a couple of days after that. Uh, so the, uh, Somerset Health Plan Group voted for its, um, in, in increase in rates for next year. As you know, at the last meeting, uh, the committee, uh, voted to add $70,000 to the line for health insurance, to increase it from 15% to 20% after making plan changes, uh, proposed plan changes. Uh, that will reduce, uh, the insurance rate to a 10% increase. So, now, uh, like, we, we had the, the increase of $70,000. Now, we're going to have a decrease of more than $70,000. So, six percentage points compared to the four percent increase, or four point increase. Uh, so now that, that's really the only change, uh, really since then. And now I don't know if there's any acts that, um, that you would want to take knowing that that is happening or would just, will just move forward with the original plan.
I would think that with, because there's still other unknowns, like Chapter 70, that I, I think it's still the most, you know, um, conservative and smartest thing to do at this point is to, to leave that because.
Yeah, we had the questions about utilities. We don't know, uh, between gas and electricity, what those rates would be. But just wanted to share that update, which is finally a positive update.
Good news. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, um, we have policies for first reading. Um, there are several and I think these are probably bear some discussion. So, let's see. The first item is the Regional School District Budget Transfer Authority. Um, it's policy DBJ1. Um, let me, sorry, pull that up. It's probably the most straightforward. I don't know if, uh, my friends in the Policy Committee want to sort of present the change here.
Let me, yeah, okay. It's, uh, this one's kind of very short. It's just kind of changing a couple words instead of school department, which ended to district, uh, changing the name, uh, for, to reflect the Chief Financial Officer rather than the Director of Business and Finance. And then just the other addition is to, uh, budget adjustments over 10% require the committee's approval first unless it's for special ed or an emergency. Those are really the only changes in that.
Any questions? I would entertain a motion, um, to accept the first reading for the Regional School District Budget Transfer Authority Policy DBJ1.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Ashley, seconded by Ms. Solomon. Anything further on discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. The next policy is to consider for first reading the promotion and retention of students. This is policy IKE.
This one's kind of just making it a little shorter. It's taking out the credits in there that's in one of the other policies. Um, so it's kind of, this is pretty much what MASC, I believe, has. I think we kind of melded it to look more like what they have. There's no, no huge changes in this one.
Yeah, it was, it's, as Ms. Ferrer said, uh, it's removing the, uh, the specificity for the, the requirements that used to exist when students needed 144 credits in order to, uh, earn their diploma. So, it's, it's just removing that and, and adopting the MASC language, which is a little bit, uh, less specific.
Does anyone have any questions?
No.
I would entertain a motion for, uh, to accept the first reading for policy IKE, the Promotion and Retention of Students.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ashley, seconded by Ms. O'Brien. Anything on discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Um, the next policy for consideration is policy IKF Commencement Exercise Participation.
This is kind of the same as the last one. Uh, it's also taking out that this is still old information, the credits of 144, um, and just putting it towards what MASC has in there. But.
Although it, and, but it, it stipulates some graduation requir- Although it, and, but it, it stipulates some graduation requirement changes that I think we need to discuss.
I was gonna say, I feel like something else is not right here.
It also note, it also mentions ninety-five credits.
That's why I'm saying, something's not right there.
Pause on that one.
Looking for the actual agenda from our meeting. Put that folder. Cause I was like, that doesn't look right. IKF, right?
Yes.
Oh, we had two. There was this one and then it was. Where did I guess it done? Okay, sorry. I think we're gonna have to come back to that one, because I, I, I would say that we tabled that one, cause that is not, Jolene, correct me if I'm wrong. And I just went back into the folder and that's what's in there too, so.
Alright, so I just.
Yeah, but we were looking at it.
Yeah, I, I just added it to the folder, PDF of it, and, and again, it's the first read, I, um, I apologize for that. But it's, the first change is, uh, just from the title commencement exercise participation to graduation requirements. And, uh, what Dr. Bresford and I did is, we, we really went into the, um, the handbook and the program of studies and taking the language that's already exists there. Students need, uh, to earn at least one hundred twelve point five credits, um, in order to receive, uh, receive their diploma. And then breaking it down by, um, the, the number of years that, um, of, of coursework, four years of English, three years of social studies, uh, and so on. So there is a change here that, um, that isn't reflected. So the, uh, the committee did, uh, propose changing the three years of math requirement in fifteen credits to four years of math in twenty credits. So a full year course earns five credits, a half year course earns two point five, just, uh, that's how we, we come up with the one twelve point five. And maintaining everything else the same, three years of science, four years of PE. Uh, the two semesters of health, uh, one semester of civics, and then it leaves room for, uh, six elective courses. Equivalently elective courses. Uh, then there's the, the other requirements, uh, so the reference to the twenty hours of community service. And this is a description of community service, uh, at the end of the document. Satisfactorily completing the math requirements for competency determination, since that's, that language still is maybe a little bit in flux, but at least identifying that whatever the competency determination requirements are, students have to meet that in order to earn their diploma. Uh, and then, uh, a, a sort of caveat for seniors where, uh, they have to successfully complete at least four full year courses and, um, and one minor or five full year courses, that, I can't recall, did that also change slightly?
Cause we were talking about the waiver.
And then, the, the next piece, the, the following paragraph, uh, had a lot of discussion about that. So for a student to participate in the commencement, uh, a student must have fulfilled all of the minimum requirements listed above. And, uh, let's see. So if students who are in good standing, if they are within, does it specify the number of courses? I'm not sure if it does. If they've not met those graduation requirements, uh, but can submit a plan, uh, to the principal to complete that coursework over the summer, then they would be able to participate in graduation. Essentially earning a blank, receiving a blank diploma, not their actual diploma, but being able to participate in that ceremony. Uh, that was, uh, a significant, that would be a significant change, uh, if that is approved. And then some of the other language is, uh, currently exists in our current requirements. So you say you didn't have time to review this, so, uh, it's not gonna affect anyone in this year's senior class. Obviously you can look at it and approve it as a first read with, um, you know, really having time to digest the, the, everything for a second read, or just, here it is, first, first read will be presented at the next meeting.
One, I'll start, so one of the, if we take it in pieces, cause I think there's a couple of different chunks here, right? So I think that for me, I would very much like us to move toward mass core frameworks for graduation requirements. And maybe that, that might need to be in pieces and gradual, but I think that, um, in order to give our students the, um, to make sure they're fully prepared for their post-secondary pursuits, I feel like, um, it would be important for us to um, make some, these requirements a little bit more rigorous, um, so I would, I think we need to, um, I would support four years of math, and I would actually be specific in that one of those needs to be completed the senior year of high school. And the reason for that is that all of the four-year Massachusetts State Colleges and Universities require, if you want to be directly admitted, they require students to complete four years of math, and they want one of those years to be in the senior year. So if we're insisting that students need to complete four years of English, and obviously one of those is senior year, it seems to me that, it makes sense to do the same for math. And, um, otherwise students, their plan might not be a four-year school, their plan, but if we don't, if we don't give them that opportunity, and sometimes kids don't realize it's an opportunity unless it's a requirement. Then they may be, you know, in a situation where they need to take a remedial, you know, non-credit bearing math course. It's gonna cost them time and money, um, because sometimes kids change their minds, right? So I feel very strongly about that piece. I would, I think for the PE requirement, I'm, uh, because we've implemented the waiver policy, I think I would be interested in sort of tweaking some of the language to, to have it sort of ref- reflect, you know, as required by law, well, the mass framework, so as required by law or as required by DESI. If they, if those things change, I think, you know, for PE, we would, I would, I would, um, I would be inclined to copy the mass core language around PE. I think we've done a tremendous job in implementing the civics program, which I know a lot of other schools are far behind. And have not really, um, so hats off to everyone for that, because I think that, um, we're way ahead of the curve in that, um, area. But for me, I, I think this is a starting point, but I also think being very explicit about, um, being able to substitute, um, for instance, computer science, um, for one of the math courses. We've had conversations about, right, at our last meeting, our students made some real, um, I think impressive presentations about the importance of computer science and similar courses. Same thing for science, lab science, but I think to be explicit that coursework in technology and engineering can fulfill those requirements. I also, there's nothing in here about world language, and maybe that's a tier-two adjustment. But, um, four-year colleges want to see two years of a language, the more competitive ones wanna see four. I think that there are room, there's room in our kids' schedules to accommodate that. And for many of those, there, there are waivers for world languages, if students can demonstrate fluency um, in another language, if they are in a CTE or a chapter seventy-four program, that can be waived. And then students, uh, in special education with, eh, on IEPs can also have that waived. So I don't, I don't view it as really an obstacle, as more, as an opportunity. And I think if we wanna give our kids full access to, uh, the range of opportunities available to them for post-secondary, that I think frankly, we just need to level up our graduation requirements to make it reflect this. So those are, in terms of the distribution of credits, those would be my concerns.
Now that I'm looking at this, the other change with adding the four years of math in the twenty credits. We put that it was, uh, starting with this freshman class, like, so obviously they need to have four years. To be here, I, I believe we put with the class of twenty twenty-nine, right?
Incoming freshmen?
Yes.
I would argue, couldn't we do the math piece sooner? I mean, every freshman is scheduled for math, I assume, every current freshman, right?
And I would say every sophomore as well.
So certainly it's not something we'd spring on seniors, right, but I, I would, I, um, I would wonder and hope and think that we would be able to, I think it's, I think it's really important. I think that as more and more kids gravitate toward, um, Massachusetts State Colleges and Universities for obvious affordability reasons, if they're saying this is what kids need to be eligible for admission, then how do we not, how do we not do that? And, and also keep in mind that as more students apply to, UMass Am- getting into UMass Amherst now is nothing like getting into UMass Amherst ten years ago, and that's the flagship. Though there are more applicants, there are more, there's more competition from out-of-state students. And so if we're not really rigorous and able to demonstrate through your school profiles, through your graduation requirements, that our kids can meet those standards, then I think we're putting them at a competitive disadvantage by, by not really, um, making those changes. I don't think we can wait for incoming freshmen to change the math requirement, I would argue that as soon as it's feasible, right? I mean, even, are there any sophomores who aren't scheduled for math as juniors?
Uh, I, I'm thinking our sophomore class, I wouldn't throw it on the juniors, cause I'm sure they've already chose their classes for next year already. But I'm, I, I'm saying our sophomore classes where I would be looking at it. I, I can't in good faith vote on this today, cause I don't see the red lines, so I, I'll just be a no, just because of that one reason. But, um, I also, I kinda, I have to ask about the world language piece, two units, um, that's on the mass core, currently, how many of our students are not taking two years of world language? Yeah, if you could get that one sooner than later, because if that's not a requirement, I have another discussion for my K eight meeting at the next meeting, because we just added it back to the seventh and eighth graders. Uh, and if it's not even a, if it's not even being required at the high school, um, I'm removing it, you know, I'm, I voted, I'm not a big fan of it putting in the middle school, but if it's not a requirement at the high school. Absolutely, it's either it should be or, or else it's not, uh, I won't be investing money in it.
Yeah, it, there was a lot of discussion in this policy, so that's why we wanted to bring it to, just to kinda get some feedback as to, um, I know Dr. Bresford was, um, had some concerns about the bottom, about them being able to walk and getting a blank diploma, so there was a lot of discussion that went back and forth, so we wanted to bring it here, so everybody could kinda have a say in, kinda, before we went back and we did though.
Can I put you on the spot? You have a reservation, you have a reservation about that being? Okay, can you, give me a reason?
So I, in the same vein, it's, it's helping with rigor, I think we're rigorous in our expectation that in order to participate in the ceremony, you have to meet graduation requirements and acquire the diploma. And that discussion starts their freshman year, and we are, this has been an expectation since, for fourteen years that I've been here, we've held to this. Obviously, with the exceptions of certificates of attendance, certificates of attainment, those, those have always been separate cases, but we've held to the expectation, we've discussed it all four years. We put plans in place, we meet with seniors at least four, if not more, times throughout their senior year, creating plans, we use flex. Um, we use summer school, as you all know, throughout their four years, we have a wonderful agreement with Mr. Aguirre, that if they're passing all of their coursework and they still need two courses, they're allowed to take night school classes during the second semester of their senior year in order to get, uh, credits. So, uh, we have multiple opportunities for students to, to acquire the credits they need, if they've been working and if they're diligent, and you all heard me, cause I think everybody has been to graduation. Every year, I talk about how even through senior, we, we do have some seniors that are here when they could be at a field day, sitting, finishing up their coursework right up until the last minute to be able to walk across that stage, and we take that seriously, like, I'm, I'm not blowing smoke when I, when I say that at graduation, we, we really have them. And the students work really hard, and I feel like if we give them the option for a plan that after that ceremony happens, I have no, I have no teeth, I have no, no ability to make sure that, that that does or does not happen, the moment has come and gone. I, I feel like all of that work, all that planning and that hard work that the students put in is gonna go away. I also did some research, we would be the only school in the SCC that does not follow the, you have to hit the graduation requirements or walk across the stage, all of the schools in the SCC do follow the expectation that we currently have, um. And if they don't make it and they need this summer, Mr. Aguirre does have a graduation ceremony that as the administrative team, we make a point to attend, we've, we've handed their diplomas as well, um. But it's a conversation that we have with the students, you know, that, that moment on the field is, is a big deal, and I think it's important to keep the motivation for those students throughout the school year, but I also think there is a there's a standard that's, that needs to be held, and talking about rigor, I think, I think we need to hold to the rigor, that's the expectation for all the students, cause every student out there worked hard to get to that one, so that is my, I, I feel very strongly about this, I think that's why we get students to the finish line before that, that day in June. And I worry if we take that off the table and just create even more plans than we already, already are working on with the students for the four years in there.
So the reason why I asked the question, cause that's how I, that's how I feel, I feel the same exact way. Do we have any colleges around here that allow students to walk the stage if they haven't completed their requirements?
Actually, I think there are some higher eds that, for masters level programs, that kids finish in this, that they finish on their requirements in the summer. Graduate level, I don't know about undergrad.
I would have to know about the undergrad, because if we're preparing them for that, you know, if we're saying, oh, we need the two years, we need the four years of math, because you go into that school, and if you need all of that, and then you have a situation where we have to understa- we have to choo- this is the, I think high school is that place where we try to prepare them for the real world. You don't get your bonus if you don't accomplish your tasks at work. You know, eh, eh, that, those are the things that I'm trying to, if you start, so that was something that caught me on the bottom, that I, uh, the red line version that I had, uh, that I saw, which it said the high school with the big line, I didn't understand why you guys didn't write it, but now I understand, but, um, I just, I know there are those difficult opportunities, like, we just had a difficult opportunity where we're not allowing a four-year-old, eleven months and thirty-six, thirty, twenty-eight days to stop school because we have, you have to be five to start on a certain date. This is similar to me, either you can't have that wiggle room, and honestly, when I wrote the speech last year, I actually reached out to Dr. Bresford to say, cause I asked, I added how many students we had graduating, and I had got that number that morning, because so all, and it was three other kids that I think, just by memory, I think three kids worked. Three other kids that I think, just by memory, I think three kids worked their rear off so they can have that opportunity. Uh at the very last minute because it went from the six to nine or something like that, I don't remember the numbers exactly, but um. The stress that those students may have had, alright, I want to do this, I'm I'm doing it, they they've worked with the administration, but um. Changing it now kind of says, all that work that you did, congratulations, I'm glad you were able to do it, but if you didn't have to. The students now don't have to do it, so that's just my opinion on that, so that's why. I wanted to make sure that you and I were on the same page, but that is the reason why I kind of, and I I understand, you know. If you're off by half a credit, it's it's really difficult, uh but I want to say something, there's one event that I never miss. Ever miss, and that's the senior, the evening school graduation, because it means just as much to the families. Actually means more to the families, I really believe that evening than uh, you know, so it it's equally. Uh as important, so.
I also feel that as a school, there's the night and there's the piece of paper. And the piece of paper is much more important, I and I know the night is the night and and I give the speech a lot about like, it's one of those moments, right? When they have that baby, it's one of those moments that flashes. But to give the night without the piece of paper, I worry that some of. I I don't want them to give up and I think forcing that. That hard work and that stress and it is very stressful and we're all stressing out that week about those kids that have to finish. Of going through that, it means it means a lot to everyone and we we've had really positive results with it. I I just feel very strong with that.
I would agree completely with Victor and Dr. Bresford, um they give enough opportunities throughout their four years. Students should know what the end goal is is, and I know it is a lot of stress, but hopefully that's teaching that population. The real world is gonna be like this, right? If you don't do X, Y, and Z by the deadline, I know I don't get. My bonus or whatever it is, you know, if if I don't do what I'm supposed to, if our goal truly is to prepare these kids. For outside of, you know, these four walls, I don't think we're teaching them anything by saying, you know. These people who sacrificed to have a diploma, you know, a a fold with an actual diploma. Um that you should be able to participate in as anything for not potentially. Putting the work.
I guess I have a different perspective, I that was my perspective twenty years ago and even ten years ago, but. Working in districts where where there are occasions on which students are permitted to participate in the ceremony. Pending and it's usually a very circumscribed, you know, it's like. Might be one class or some, you know, the district I work in now, it's no more than two classes. Um and I get that there may be, it seems like cognitive dissonance to say, if you haven't earned the thing, why do you get to participate in the ceremony, I get that. Um but I think we're probably talking about a pretty, we're talking about a pretty small number of kids here, I assume, like a hand, two, four a year. Small number of kids who don't walk. Less than.
Less than, less than five every year.
And and that's a testament to the the work that is done to get kids to the finish line, and I don't, I'm not disputing that or doubting that at all. For me, I think, I feel like, I think, what if, what if a student has a medical situation? Do they get a concussion, everybody's getting concussion, you know, um three weeks before and they're not able to complete a certain assignment? Are we giving them, maybe they get a medical exemption from some things at the end, right, but like, because they're human beings, right, and things happen. Um the school year is a hundred and eighty days. Seniors are permitted to be done at day one sixty-eight, right, and then graduation falls somewhere between. So I guess for me, um I do think about, and maybe it's, I worked in a different district one where you work now, where I, you know. There are family members who for whom this ceremony is the. It is the ceremony for that student, it might be the first time for some families and um. I think that it is also reasonable to put plans in place on senior contracts. You can put a time limit on it, you can say it needs to be done by day one eighty, I mean, there's there's, you can put plans in place, kids can do things over the summer. I'm not sure what's gained. I mean, we could say they might not do it, but they want their diploma, they're gonna do it, and if they don't, then they're the ones who suffer. It's not, they're not taking a seat from someone else, right, I don't know, I um. I feel like, and we make, you know, we make compromises sometimes along the way anyways, like for instance, if a kid's medically. Exempt and they maybe can't get that final paper done and they've got a concussion. Do we not let them walk? Or do we say, you know what, you've you can't look at a screen, you can't write a paper, we're gonna excuse that assignment, isn't that really the same thing? Like, we do those things, I think, as educators, and I also feel like. High school graduation is the culmination of twelve or thirteen years, I guess, if I'm pretty careful, it's not just high school. It's bigger than that, and I don't. I don't know what, you know, obviously we don't gain anything if kids don't actually achieve the diploma. I just think it's a really big moment and I think that there's wiggle room there, I think that there's room for grace and I wonder, like. When our seniors leave on day one sixty-eight, all those senior teachers, so what we do in my district is all those senior teachers when those they leave, they. Like adopt the kid, those at-risk kids for graduation and they work with them to get them. What they need to actually receive the diploma. So I know it's actually messy, I get it, it's much clear cut to say the deadline's the day before and that's it, but. And in the two districts where I've worked, um both of them have permitted students within parameters. To walk at graduation, they get the blank diploma, they earn it later, they get the, they get the real thing. Um they're not, their name is not in the program, but they get to put the capping gown on and walk amongst their peers. And I think that is a big deal for kids, I've been to that graduation as well many times, it is lovely, but. It is not the same, if I think in the eyes of some families, in terms of that night with all of their classmates. So, not saying it's a hill I'm gonna die on, but I do think that there are schools, there are actually a lot of schools that do this. And I can, if I can think of one or two circumstances medically or whatever, where it would be. A good, kind, gracious thing to do, then I'm not sure why we can't have a mechanism where that's an option. That would require a plan and approval of the principal, but I think to say a hundred percent of the time, cut and dried, that can never happen. I think it's harsh, that's just me, that's probably maybe the mom in me, but that's.
Those were all of my concerns when we discussed it um originally. It is, it does seem like a hard line and there could be those students that. You know, in that end of the year that we're pushing and pushing and pushing to get them there and we just don't get them there, no matter how hard they tried and. They're not gonna get that moment, that like Mrs. Andrew said, they work twelve years for and they're they're. They don't get to walk with their peers, they. I I can imagine, you know, I'm I'm thinking of my own kids, I can imagine. Like my son being like, no, I was half a credit away, I I don't get to graduate with my friends that I went to school with for twelve years, I don't have that moment, that same moment they have. So I guess it's kind of like a, it could be kind of like a considered a heartstrings thing in that respect, um I totally understand both sides. I can see both sides, but that that was my feeling, the hard line of it all and the. It seems harsh, that was my perspective.
No, I just, I would rather this subject to be allowed before and have the hard line at the end. Uh there are a lot of times where, you know, you talk about. There's there's, other than the state requirements, there are local requirements that we can and we do. Wait when there are medical issues and we've we've had situations where three weeks before graduation, something did happen and. We've looked at their transcript as a whole, we've said, we can call it, we know they've done well, we can call it. Like, I would rather have a subjectivity which we do and we make all these plans and we we do all that up until that day, but. Have the hard line at the end because I don't want to get into a situation where this one we say, yes, you can, this one we say, no, you can't. Cause you didn't try, but you did try, like, that to me is a difficult call at the end and that's a call that. You're all gonna get the phone calls, because why this one and why this one, I would rather be able to work with the families up until that moment. And I think we do and and we've had medical situations and things that happened at the end, but it is a culmination of. Of the whole year and the work and the contracts that we we have, we can sign contracts throughout the year, what they're going to do to get to the end year, so. I just, when it comes down, you have to make the call, I feel like that should be the line, but.
And again, if you sign a contract and it's not, oh, okay. What are we teaching our students? Now, I would like to see the data, how many students from your former districts. Um that have walked through, I mean, has walked across the stage and. Did the follow-up work, I would love to see that data, because if it's a real high, high extreme number, that might change my. Uh thinking, but without that data.
It's high, I can think of two kids who didn't in years, but I'm interested in what maybe perhaps one of the ways to address it is. So I guess what makes me nervous about the, you know, must, if if we. We, you, um are um. We making some of those exceptions or waivers or something like that ahead of time, um. I, that does make sense to me, right, like, so I don't know if that as a practice. I guess it's if it's a policy and it's, right, so I think we just, we have to align. Practice with policy and um. And the other thing I would point out too is just for us, our passing grade is a sixty-five, which. It is a little bit higher than a lot of comparable districts where it's a sixty, right, so I mean, and I'm not saying we shouldn't have that, but like a D. Sixty-five, a lot of places, it's a sixty, all the ones I work at, so and I'm not arguing against that, I'm just saying like there's there's rigor there. And we're obviously gonna discuss this, so further, but I guess perhaps. Making clear, I I like to give principals the um. The authority to make those calls and I think if the policy says, some, our policy doesn't sort of put that in there in some way. Then they're not, then they're not aligned, so maybe that's the conversation to have. For me, that's a sm- this is, that's a smaller part of the the larger discussion, which is what do our kids need to do in order to be able to, you know, graduate, go out to world, so. I'm more concerned with the graduation requirement, the distribution. Than the ceremony, but. But I do think there's room in there, so. I've talked enough, anybody else? So we're actually, we're not, we're gonna table this one, we'll move first reading on this to the next meeting so that we can. See the red line changes, um. And it might be helpful, I don't know about the rest, it might be helpful for us to have some additional data in terms of, I'm curious about. What did you say, Mr. Machado about?
I would like to know how many in the last five, yeah, how many kid, how many students are not taking the two years of. Language, um I would like to know how many students did not get the opportunity to walk across the stage. A number wise, not names, obviously, and how short they were, like, because I think that's really valuable because of half a credit. And ten credits could be completely different, um if. If the two gens can find out some information from other districts or any districts that you may be currently or have worked at. That does allow that and if we know any undergrad co- universities that have any of that type of exception as well, that would be very helpful. For me to agree to something like that.
I I I wonder if it might be easier if if we looked at students who meet mass core and students who don't, because there are a lot of like pieces in there, right? Like world language is a piece to inform, rather than trying to get all the different little threads of that, if. For me, I would sort of, if I had a picture of, here are the students who meet mass core or here are the students who aren't meeting mass core. And I'm very, I'm interested in. Are they members of subgroups, like, and what is missing for mass core, right, so is it the language or is it the fourth year of math or is it? You know, lab science, but what is, you know, what are we missing, so I think that.
I just think any type of information that you can throw at us is valuable because obviously out of the current six of us right now and seven. Uh only two of you actually have that experience that you see it every single day, the other five are completely blind. Uh when I I'm looking at it as the real world, you know, that's the way I'm looking at it, um. You don't get something if you don't earn it, um and if you stop that practice, if you have students sign a contract, that's why during the handbook. If we're not, if if we're not enforcing it, why is it in the handbook, it just sends a a bad message to our students and to the. Public at large, so.
Can I just, I I'm not trying to belabor this, but this could be my last meeting on this committee because we're reorganizing next week. We don't know who's gonna sit here in this moment, and I realized if I don't at least put in my two cents now, I I might not be able to and so.
Don't say that.
But I mean, it's the reality, I don't know what's gonna happen, so um. Some thoughts I have after having worked here as an educator. I I think that the scenarios that Dr. Bresford is describing in my experience is not. A one-credit shy, it it's a student who's had perhaps some challenges throughout their academic programming. That have created a snowball situation where it's a lot, it's a lot, so I just kind of want to paint that picture because. I don't think it's like a one incident, like, you know, head injury kind of thing, um I, what I actually have seen is the. Staff be extremely accommodating when those scenarios arise, um. So I just want to throw that out there, um because I I don't want to talk about a situation that doesn't exist, if it doesn't exist, right? So I think we should seek that feedback from the administration, additional information. My other two cents, I I fully support four years of mathematics, I clearly support, I'm very biased toward computer science. And engineering uh and technology specifically, um I I very much support a computer science taking the place of. You know, one year of mathematics, I also am inclined to ask everybody to reconsider. All of the um additional core courses in the electives, art, design, technology, music. Perhaps world language, but that's like a whole separate conversation. I I would like this committee and the administration to possibly revisit part-time classes or semester-based electives. Because when I, I'm gonna use myself as an example, when I was a student in high school, I was a nerdy tech kid. And I was a music kid and I got to do both and I didn't have to choose, and what we keep hearing is that there's low enrollment in electives. Because there's not that flexibility to do what they want to do and explore things at an introductory level, that's just like dipping your toe in the pool a little bit. And then that will naturally feed into our more accelerated programs. Because you're gonna have a greater student body that gets to do that introductory level. And and the ones who are truly inspired by that subject matter will want to move on to something more advanced. So I know that we've gotten away from that for a lot of reasons, I went to school during the infamous eight-day schedule, right? And I know that it, that was not perfect also, but what it did afford me was the ability to follow my passions through the electives. So that's just my two cents, thank you.
We all have some homework to do. So goodness, graduation activity.
Yeah, there's one more.
Next on the agenda. Our first meeting is graduation exercises.
This is an easy one, yes.
IKFB.
This is it. This is pretty much just putting in the correct people that actually speak at the graduation, because the, uh, people that weren't here were not, it was not correct, it's not actually who speaks, um, saying that the administration are the ones that will be handing out diplomas and then changing it so not all of us are signing the diplomas, so they don't have like a, you know, twenty by thirty, uh, that just the chair is signing, so, that's pretty much all the changes.
Just for the record, we had to sign.
Oh, wow.
All the diplomas.
Did you also ask for three copies?
And, and the slips, side messages.
I'm actually, not to be a pain.
No.
My only question about this is, does it even need to be a policy at all, or is it more of a procedure, and is it more appropriate to just put it in the student handbook, and I don't know, so, for instance, only because, um, the student speaker part, I think it's very important to be clear about that, I'm sure, so there's no controversy, I totally understand that, um, I just don't know if that's a school committee policy, or if, if it's, if it's, because handbooks, we make changes every year, whereas a policy is once a policy committee, first reading, second reading, I don't know, it's just more onerous to me, and I don't know that, I have no problem with anything that's written here, but I noticed that MASC has no policy that connects to this, so does it need to be a policy, or can it simply be included in a handbook, which would, if you needed to, make a change at the administrative level, you could do that.
I, I think the reason why this is here is because there are many districts that I know of that, um, it becomes a, I want to hand the diplomas out, a lot of school committee members tend, in other districts, never has happened here, the only time a school committee member has handed a diploma is for their own child or a member of the family or something like that, uh, it's never been a, an issue in Somerset, but there are some districts where school committee members, there are, all the school committee members are up there. What, what was that?
I am familiar with that.
Oh, okay, so I think that is the reason why, you know, this way, you know, if someone goes up to the administration, oh, well, that's a policy, you may have to bring that up to your school committee type of thing, because that's the only reason I think it's there.
Fair enough. Do we have a motion to accept this on a first reading?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Machado, does he have a second? Second by Ms. O'Brien, anything further on discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. All right, next item on the agenda, updates from Somerset and Berkeley, Ms. Solomon, you want to start with Berkeley?
We were just here a couple weeks ago, I haven't had a, a school committee meeting since then, so I got nothing.
Perfect.
I feel like we were just here.
I'm going to lie, I think you should do it, since it's your last one.
Now I'm like, I got to find the agenda, so, do you have the agenda?
Budget hearing.
Oh, yes, we had our budget hearing, that's right, okay, great.
And we, uh, we voted on our budget, and I don't have my notes, um.
We talked about middle schoolers participating in.
Yes, in lacrosse. We, we ended up agreeing to a waiver, or it was already agreed to, but we had a discussion about, uh, the middle schoolers being able to play for the high school lacrosse team. What else am I missing?
Okay, hold on.
I was like, what, I'm, I'm like, trying to find the, uh, what was it, the first?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
I got it.
Thank you. I was going to say, was my last one, but I don't even remember, so.
We had a quick discussion of.
Articles.
We talked about our, um, request for proposals based on the vote at the special town meeting in February.
Yes, and we also discussed, um, cameras in signposts at North, because, um, some of our commu- community members are, um, using it for golfing and break, uh, there's been some damage to some of the solar panels, so the adjacent lot for the, uh, water department. And that's it, is that it? That's it, yeah.
Okay, cool, thank you, topics not anticipated by the chair. I don't have anything other than, Mr. Schoen, with the, um, I don't know if we want to bring this up, but, the communication you shared with us from, um, Desi regarding compliance with Title Six?
Six.
Yes.
We have not received, uh, any information yet from Desi about, um, all right, so let me back up, last Thursday, if you're not aware, uh, President Trump signed an executive order, um, related to, um, K-12, pre-K-12 schools with DEI programs, uh, and looking for districts and states to attest that they don't participate in any discriminatory practices. Uh, we have yet to see exactly what that will look like, what, uh, the state will require of districts, uh, to sign off on that, I think it was yesterday, there was a, an extension to the original ten-day, um, uh, notice, so, uh, the, the new deadline is April twenty-fourth, but as I said, uh, we have not, school districts in Massachusetts have not received any information yet from our State Department of Education about this, and I'll just say, if it is attesting to, uh, to Title Six or, or other, um, titles, we don't discriminate, we don't discriminate on race, religion, we don't, when, when you're applying for a job here, if you are an employee, it doesn't matter if you are Christian, Jewish, Muslim, atheist, black, brown, white, or other people of color, gay, trans, straight, um, it, it doesn't matter, because though everything else in there, we don't discriminate, so if that's what the, uh, what we have to attest to, I'll gladly do that, because we don't discriminate.
Thank you. Any other topics? I have nothing else, action items for future meetings, other than what's already been discussed at length. Good? Um, next item on the agenda is consider the approval of the open session minutes of March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, and to approve and release the March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five executive, uh, minutes, can we take those two together? Okay, so I would entertain a motion to accept the open session minutes of March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ferrera.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Solomon, anything on discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, and then I would entertain a motion to accept and release the executive session minutes of March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five as presented. Motion by Ms. Ferrera.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Machado, anything on discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. And the last item on the agenda is public input. All right, then I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?